Hold on, I'm blurred. You can see it. Is that better? Okay, there we go.
All right, so I go ahead and call the meeting of the Joint Planning Commission and Variance Committee of the kind of pilot order at six oh one on August the sixteenth. And if you'll go ahead and and do roll call.
Ms. Sandy Kalish.
Here.
Ms. Wendy Ben- Penzel.
Here.
And Lori Rafferty is absent tonight, so we do not have a quorum. We have nobody for public comment.
Can you improve the agenda without?
No, sir. We can't vote on anything, so we will push the agenda out.
Right, or it's not on the board.
Yeah. I have a list of bullet items that we need to discuss, though, in a regular meeting. That doesn't require any sort of action to be taken on them right now. First is the highest priority is filling the positions on this board. We have got to figure out how to get people on this board, on this commission. By our code, and I put that at the back of each one of your packets today. I printed it out of our code. It tells you who could be a member, how many members we need to have. And we just need to start getting that out and try to get people in here. As I told them, we were given incorrect information at one point. And we were told that people who don't live in the town or don't have a business here can be on the board, but only as advisory members. Or they have, they have to have a business here, but they're not members of the town, but they could be advisory members, but they can't, they don't have a vote. That's incorrect. We can take up to three people on this board that own a business here, has an address here. And they do have a vote on this committee. So we need seven members total, and right now we only have three. So we really need to figure out a way, pavement, and get people on this committee. No. There's no age requirement.
Well, there has to be.
Well, oh, you mean, how young?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, eighteen, sorry.
Yeah.
I don't think about that. I don't see many eighteen-year-olds want to run in here and do this, but I could be wrong, you know?
But that's when you can go to the high school, to social studies, and see if they have anybody who is senior.
And willing, yeah.
And is interested in government.
That's a idea. So I can email the school.
I was just thinking. Patrick has a student advisory.
Does he?
Yep, every year he has a senior student advisory member.
All right, well, then I'll email the school. That's a great idea. I'll start with that. I did, I did put it out on Facebook again today. With links to our webpage that list updated information according to what's in our code, and I have taken the same and sent it over to Rancho Lynn News to be put in next week's publication. See what we can get with that. I don't know if you guys are aware yet, but we did pass a hundred and eighty-day moratorium on development. And that has allowed us six months to get critical updates done to our code to better prepare us for development coming back. People coming back and applying to develop again here. We were sorely not ready this last time, and we don't want to go through that process again. And we need to get on the ball and get those things updated. So we put a sixty, a hundred and eighty-day moratorium in place that allows us six months to get those updated. We are focusing primarily right now on exactly that development, that section sixteen is zoning, section seventeen is subdivisions in our code. By Monday, I should have a list for you guys on what sections of the code we're looking at changing or looking at reviewing again to either clear up the wording or to revise the process. I've been told to look at Gypsum, Colorado, and Carbondale, Colorado, as possible codes to, that closely resemble Kiowa. Yeah. Yeah. So take a look at those and what they have in their code as they relate to ours. But I will have a list for you guys Monday of what we're going to start hitting and what we need to start reviewing. Uh, let's see.
Put in the lot size that we want.
Yes, those, all those things need to be considered. If those are concerns for you, they need to be added to that list.
Well, see, that's, that's the biggest thing, especially when somebody wanted to shrink that lot size. I think we need to go bigger. You know, I mean, I like my lot.
And that, that way, they can't argue, and that was one of the arguments they had, and they kept telling us our code doesn't work, our code is is not usable. It's not that it wasn't usable. It wasn't usable for them because it didn't meet their wants, what they were wanting to see. But if we put it in that code like that, then that's how we want it. That's how it stays. And then if anybody wants to change that, they have to come back and ask permission to do that.
Here's the skip beyond that hundred and sixteen acres. One acre is forty-three hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. That acreage over there is five million fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet. At three thousand square foot lots, that equals sixteen hundred and eighty-four houses over there.
No, say that's.
On a hundred and sixteen acres?
On a hundred and sixteen acres, it's sixteen hundred and eighty-four lots. That's less infrastructure important. So you figure fifteen hundred houses. That doesn't fit.
If it's all homes, but then they always like to use it with commercial.
Open spaces. You have to figure in.
Yeah.
That there's commercial in there, but you sit down and do the math on some of this stuff. Oh, you get two more bites of the apple. Oh, you get two more bites of the apple.
I mean, I said on roughly half acre that backs up the background right after. I mean, it's a nice sized lot, even though I think mine is hard too. I'm not going to build anything. But it gives me plenty.
Gives you room.
Yeah.
Gives you room. You're not reaching out a bathroom window touching somebody else's bathroom window.
There's a fire.
This is ridiculous.
Yeah.
When you think of thirteen hundred square foot lots, they're going to put the garage in the basement, so they're going to have to have alley access, and they're going to have to have street access. And they're gonna go over to Chambers and Parker Main, just before you start up the hill to go to Cabela's. And look at those houses on the left there, those three stories. That's about a three thousand square foot lot.
I am not reaching out to my neighbors, sorry. I can't even stand the ones just when they're across.
Quit now.
Let alone that close.
There has been a suggestion that we create a committee for the code updates and possibly a committee for the comprehensive plan updates instead of the entire board or the entire commission. I don't know if that would get too too much. Or if we divide and conquer. We have some board members on one, some board members on the other with regard to both those areas, because we have codes that we're looking at, and we're also updating our comprehensive plan at the same time. We had a meeting today with Kim Lee Horn, who is the company who spearheading our comprehensive plan updates. They suggested that we possibly create a committee that's involved in this, that helps go out in the community also and pulls community members in, helps participate in our comprehensive plan, public meetings and community gatherings. And then gets the word out, you know, to other members of the community that we need their input, whether it's by survey, whether it's participation in that way, whether it's coming to our board meetings or planning meetings. We need everybody coming together and working on this in some form or fashion, and we it was suggested at the meeting today that possibly we do two planning and variance meetings a month to address all of the areas of the code that are looking to be updated. And then hold off on the board meeting for those, because what they do here in the planning of variance is formulating a feedback and recommendation to the board on what they should be approving. And instead of having a board meeting twice a month to talk about what you guys have talked about twice a month, that's a lot of meetings, and it's a lot of meetings to pay an attorney to be participating in as well, and she's, has to be part of the comprehensive plan. There's no choice in that, because she has the land use part of it. I'd rather not pay her to participate twice a month in this and twice a month in board. So if we can do a twice-a-month planning for at least six months to get through what we need to discuss in in here to get the feedback over to the board, and then have the board, we're looking at maybe the board getting together at their November meeting to discuss what we've been able to work through. Yes, yes.
I can do twice a month, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I'm coming in advisory on twice a month here as well.
And I told Lori, she says she'll let me know on Monday. I asked her if she can give me a few days a week to choose from.
I just need a good heads up because I've been promoted with my company and they're in the process of getting me different training, which is going to send me out
Okay.
of the area. So
And I knew yours didn't have as much leeway as others did.
Yeah, I could, you know, if I'm in town and I can have people scheduled at my store, then I'm good.
Is it? I was hoping we can find a certain day, like we, we know our monthly meeting is the third Wednesday. Is there another day in the month that we could say, okay, we do it the third Wednesday, and then we do it the first Wednesday, or something like that?
We just pick, as long as, again, I don't know when they might say, hey, you can't go into such and such, and I have to go.
Um, so yours wouldn't be set, so would it work better than if?
If we say first and third, then I can set it with my team at my store, but again, they might call me tomorrow and say, hey, Wendy, you need to be in Texas for three weeks. I just don't know.
Okay, well, the great thing about the second one is we can do it whenever. It's not set, so.
Some of it that I can do via Zoom.
Zoom, yes, ma'am.
Then I can be anywhere to do that. So that's as long as I'm not having to be at my store, I can do Zoom anytime, anywhere pretty much.
So do you, I, I may, I'll wait to see what Lori says, but is there a day of the week that works best for either one of you or any certain week of the month?
As long as I know what's certain day of the month.
Yeah. You know.
Yeah, first or third, or move it to second and fourth. I, as long as it stays consistent, then I can coordinate.
But we have to do the third, because that's what our, our charter says. So we are bound by that. So right now, we can just look at first and third, and I'll see, I'll let Lori know what we discussed tonight and see if that works for her. And then if anything needs change with regard to that, then we have the leeway with the first one. We can't change the third one, but we can change the first one.
No, and my, my company, as long as they know, they'll make sure everything they can to ensure, because they want us to be involved in volunteer stuff, so.
Okay. Rick, you didn't say nothing. Are you good with that?
He's retired. He doesn't care.
I know. I still like to hear his input.
Yeah, I quit driving kids today.
It was your last day?
Yeah, but you got mine still.
You doing okay with it?
I know it's.
No way.
I was only eight coming back in. I ain't lasted, no, I don't think now. I'm sorry, but I don't think I'll last that long.
Um, how do you guys feel about the committee? I mean, right now, this is what we got. I think this is a committee size, you know?
The problem is, we can't get variance people. How are we going to get other people to be?
Right.
Committee and variance. I mean, we, you can't find volunteers to do one thing. It's like the school. They ask for volunteers, they get the same ones every single time. And those volunteers are done. I told them, I said, don't ask a volunteer anymore.
I know. I mean, so my response when that was suggested today was, I feel like what we have right now sitting at the table is the committee as far as looking at the code updates right now.
Pretty much.
Um, and then we can go to the board and request other board members to do.
What's that lady's name? Carrie, what's her name?
Carrie Howard.
No, Carrie, that comes from Elizabeth all the time to double out.
Oh, Carrie Mills.
She doesn't own a business, so.
No, I was thinking about talking to Alex.
Oh, he's our new guy. He's opening up a Mexican food restaurant where the barbecue place was.
I, I might be able to talk him into it.
He doesn't know anything yet.
Yeah. And he likes you, so.
Yeah, he does. Got a very good working relationship.
I might be able to talk him into it.
Yeah, but hold on. I have to make sure.
Hopefully, in the next few weeks. So he wants to be open.
Yeah, there's no time requirement on how long he has to have a business here, so that would work.
Okay, mid-September is when he's.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's, they're working on painting and getting the sign changed and stuff, so I was just thinking.
You know who else I think would be great for this?
Because he's very enthusiastic.
Very opinionated, but Joey Coons. With Just Peachy.
Yeah, but she's, she, well, yeah, she's got the business.
She owns the business. Joey Coons.
Yeah. Um, and she is, believe it or not, my father-in-law's girlfriend's niece, so I can always approach in a roundabout way.
Yeah, because she's come to a few of our meetings.
A lot of opinions.
She had, she came to a board meeting with a lot of opinions about that development and about development in the town, and I had a very long conversation with her at the fair about development in the town and her feelings about it. She has very defined opinions and thoughts, and I think she would be great for that if she's allowed a position.
Be a voting member, then?
Yeah, she would, because she has a business. She owns Just Peachy down the road.
Yeah, and she owns the building, so it's not just the business.
She also owns the bar.
Right. It's for sale.
Yeah, but she still owns it.
And the bank or whatever.
The bank that got crashed.
Yeah.
She, the day before got crashed.
She was supposed to finalize it the next day. And she's still going to do it, but she told him, I'm not signing your paper until you fix it, yeah. So Joey would be a good one, so.
They got to be eighteen.
Yeah.
So I'll ask through the other channels.
Okay.
About that one, okay?
Okay.
And I'll, I'll kind of poke it out.
Yeah.
Now, there, there was a thing brought up about Water District. Does that have to go to the voters to vote against having a water district or, you know, a special district, water district?
What for a new development?
Well, we put up the moratorium. Trevor, I think, brought up about putting, you know, season Water District, Special District in town.
Oh, in the code, updating the code with something regarding that? That would fall under subdivision. It would fall under section seventeen, if that's how you guys chose to go. I would have to check on that. I don't know.
Because I didn't know whether that had to go through the both two people.
Well.
Take it out.
Does it, I haven't read it extensively. Does it say something to that effect right now? Does it say anything regarding special districts in it now?
I can't remember.
I can't either. I'll have to print out, I I will pull out section sixteen and seventeen and email them to you guys, since those are the two areas we're going to be focusing on. And we'll, all these questions that come up, look for it. If we don't have it, write it in, you know what you're thinking, or highlight it if it is in there. You know, and notate, do you want the verbos to change? What do you want to change? You know, all those things.
You could print mine out.
Oh, yeah.
And then I'll, I'll just pick it up, and then I start making the notes and this and that.
Okay.
Did a lot of this before, what's her name this year? On the planning commission, and it was never edited or published until September.
We never finalized it, any of it. And that's, you know, that's something I wanted to touch on tonight, too. We had a lot of meetings about Airbnbs, and we had a lot of meetings about other areas that needed to be updated. And that's why we need to have the two meetings a month, because we can't we can't have one subject that carries on for four meetings, because it's not productive. And we've got a six-month deadline to get it done, so we have to keep this process going. And I, I told Ruth, I want a spreadsheet done, a tickler list on what these areas are that we need to address. And we need to set up a schedule of what meetings we're going to address them at and just keep them going.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, because we discussed Airbnb, and that's been going on for.
Yeah, and that's not part of this right now. We're gonna, we need to address that, but that's going to come at the end, after we get past what we've put a moratorium on. We didn't put a moratorium on that. So Kim Lee Horn said that they will run concurrently with us in our code updates, so that they'll try to keep up with the code updates you guys are proposing with what their comp plan is showing as they move along and they develop more information and they obtain more information from the public and their research and their data collection, it's going to play into what they're doing with our comp plan updates. They are looking to finish our comp plan in January, and we are looking to file with Munich Code the updates that we're proposing to the code in February. February is our deadline for the moratorium and for getting these filed, so we should have all these ordinances done and approved.
Then the moratorium in January twenty fifth.
It should end, we had our meeting this month, which was August, what, eighth?
Yeah, I was thinking one of the papers on the moratorium, and it's put it at stops on January twenty fifth of twenty twenty-four.
I'll have to go back and look, but it was six months from the day we approved it, four hundred and eighty days.
It's adopted an order published as an emergency on July twenty-sixth.
So it went on July twenty-sixth, then? Okay, so it would be January. Okay, so then, I mean, we could fight, we just need to make sure that
We can still.
We can extend it, yeah.
Don't really want to, but.
But if I, the goal is to have these ordinances done. You guys do your part in doing what you need to do to make recommendations to the board. The board takes it on their side, and here's public comment during the public hearings on these ordinances, and they get these ordinances approved. And then by that time, we should have all the ordinances approved and ready to send off to Munich Code to update our code with. That's the goal. That's all I had for notes, guys. Did you guys have anything?
Seminar at the background with that company.
So part of our meeting today, our first community input meeting will be September fourteenth from five to eight at the Ag Building. It's kind of like we did the master plan for the school, and we had the community come in three different intervals. This is going to be the first of ours for the cop plan. And I am worried about that, I'd be honest with you guys, because I've had a lot of community members tell me that we participated a lot in these things, and you guys had these, this was prior to my arrival here, and a lot of the town came, a lot of town came and gave their input and, you know, their feelings on it, strong feelings, and then nothing was done with it. So at that point, they kind of lost faith in the town and doing anything. They, they come and they voice it like we ask them to, and then nothing's done. So I am concerned that we're not going to get a lot of input. We didn't get a lot of input with school at all. I mean, all those kids that go to that school and all those parents in the community, we have seven hundred people in this community, and we probably only had maybe thirty or forty people show up for those. It was a very sad turnout. So as much as we can push this to the community and try to get their, their buy-in and their input on this, the better.
Okay, so just zipping through my phone. I'm going to hit up Sherri Wyatt. She's, she lives in, on Chastecourt. And she's a teacher. Thomas Steed.
Oh, yeah, Thomas.
He lives down on the, at the four-way stop.
Yeah.
Robbie Haas's wife, she works at the sheriff's office, and they live over on Cheyenne. Casey Knox, she lives in the trailer park. I'm going to go ask Katie Dickman, who's Katie Farnin. And Mona Shantz, she'd be a good one.
Mona's the one over there at the gas station.
Yeah, she owns it.
Lori Knack Campbell, Lori Campbell lives over on.
Yeah, Lori'd be good.
Yeah, Lynn Campbell lives on My Walk. Lissy St. Pierre lives across the street. And Julie Muzak lives over here on Naval. She just retired.
She's not happy with us right now.
I don't care.
Okay.
We'll ask her, then we'll ask her husband. He loves me.
He's not happy either.
Terry Mills should come in as a probably advisor.
She could be advisor.
She doesn't own a business.
No, but she's still coming as an advisor.
Not without, no, not without owning a business here. And that's how Debbie came. Only thing Debbie would have had, Debbie should have had a vote, is my, is my point. She had a business here, she has business and she has property here, and she came on this board and the, but Bob Tibbles told her she only was able to be an advisory member. She couldn't have a vote. And she should have had a vote by our code.
So we need, out of that list, we need four more people, right? Off that list, we need four volunteers.
We need four, I, I put it out there, is we need four positions filled. Yeah, Debbie could have, because Kiowa Water and Waste was a separate entity.
Brandon Prokop, too.
I think Brandon would be great. He was in my mind, too, but I'm concerned that he may shy back because he's running the restaurant, and now he's the head football, I mean, basketball coach.
Not Brandon. Prokop is not.
Oh, that's JR, okay, so Brandon.
Owns the restaurant.
JR's doing basketball.
And works at Sundown in LA.
That's right. I get him and JR confused. I'm sorry.
That's JR's father.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think you do it, but.
We'll ask.
No, but we got to get these filled and get this moving, because we're going to be at in that.
Yeah, we can't have, we can't have meetings like this where we have nothing. I mean, we could sit here and talk about it, but we can make no action on it. So, I mean, if we had to, we could sit here and have a discussion about it and then put off having action till the next meeting, but I'd rather it'd be so much more productive if we had a room.
Too, you sometimes then have to re-talk about it.
And take up meeting time for the next one.
Right.
Well, we can't turn around and pass it around through here and then passage direct over to Board of Trustees to go through it, has to be voted on over here.
Well, you know, Lissy St. Pierre, very good. I don't imagine, she lives across the street.
From you?
Same place, right here.
Oh, no, I don't know who she is.
She's got two little kids, though. I don't know if that'll work.
Yeah. It's like the school, they're having a hard time getting anybody. They can't get people to even help with the bond issue and stuff, it's like.
That's how it was when there was, yeah.
This bond is, is going to be tough, because a lot of people want the extra tax.
Nobody's going to vote for that.
And they, they brought it to where it never stops.
It's not going to happen. There's too many people in this town that don't want to see the growth. And they don't want to pay the taxes, because they're already doubled.
They got to have a new school.
Yes.
You're.
I agree. But.
For the bond. Because everybody's taxes are already going up without having a bond pass.
Right.
So.
We didn't try and change our taxes just because of different.
Lynn Campbell.
Your.
Consider being on the planning commission for the time of.
So it's the planning commission shall meet on the third Wednesday of each month at seven, unless by a majority vote of the voting members of the planning commission. Some other day and time is selected.
We already did that, remember? We changed it to six by ordinance.
Well, but what I'm saying is other day and time, so we do not have to.
Yeah, we can't change it.
The third Wednesday of the month, we can change it by a vote. Just saying, based on what you gave us.
Yes, but I'm saying that you can do that, but this is in the code, and in order to change the code
Updating.
You guys can vote on that and then send that to the board as a recommendation or want, and then they have to approve it by ordinance, and it has to be updated in the code by ordinance. So right now, it's not noted right here, but there's an ordinance sitting in there that we sent in beginning of last year.
It says we can go six.
Yes. But yeah, you can. We just have to, we have to go through a whole ordinance and
Okay. I was just reading.
And I can confirm that, but.
It doesn't, this doesn't say it has to be through an ordinance.
Well, anything that's in the code, if you look underneath it, it says ORD, all those ORDs, those are all ordinances that revised it, yeah. Anything in the code has to be revised by ordinance, but I will confirm that with the attorney, because I'm only going off the advice of the last attorney.
Yeah.
And he's also the one that said Debbie didn't have a vote, so.
Yeah.
You know, so I'll confirm that, but yeah, that's why all of those after the asterisks, after all of those, they ordered. It's because every one of those areas were updated at those years by ordinance.
So since Debbie does have a vote, is she coming back?
Seriously doubt that.
Who's that?
Debbie.
Oh.
I don't know. She, she resigned. She was mad at us when she resigned, so I don't know if she will. I can ask her. I would love for it to, because I think she'd be great input.
Yes.
Here, as a business owner. You know, and a property owner. Um.
And real estate.
And real estate, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a wealth of knowledge there, that. Would be applicable to these codes. So. I'll ask her. It's the least you can do, all I can say is no.
So here's my other question, right now, we only have. Three members. How, uh. And it says we're supposed to have seven, are we then counting our non-voting members towards our?
Can't, because they're board members.
So how do we get, right now, how are we getting quorum?
Three. Three is a quorum right now.
If three, all three show up.
If all three show up, if all three don't show up.
Right. Well, that's why I'm just trying to verify.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it can be seven or more, we don't have to stop at seven. Right.
But only three of them could be business owners.
Right. That's. Okay. Okay.
Anybody think of anything else?
Patty Antsy likes you.
What?
I'm just being sarcastic, sorry.
I'm like Sandy out, I feel like I believe you. I don't have.
Know him, so.
I feel like I believe you.
Sorry. I just had to throw that out there, you know, talking about business owners.
Kind of commitment.
Which one?
This is Misak.
Good.
Twice a month, for now.
We are in the process.
I think that's a very healthy list. To start looking at.
Yes.
So. That makes me feel a little hopeful.
We are in the process of updating. Our building codes and ordinances. We put a six-month moratorium on building in the town. So that we could. Have our ordinance updated. We are going to have two meetings a month. And they're going to be the.
First, first.
And third Wednesdays, that's sick of being. And. We don't have enough volunteers to have the planning commission do their job. That's why I'm reaching out to my whole list of. People on my phone.
You know, people in Nebraska. What the heck did you just send me?
So, anything else we wanna talk about tonight, except, oh, we're starting this effective.
September, first week of September.
Yeah.
Next.
Meetings on.
Which will be.
Third Wednesday.
Six.
Six, six P M.
So nine, six.
The moratorium lasts for six months.
Nine.
And we don't have enough voting members to pass ordinances. To give to new developers in our county.
So tomorrow. I will send you guys section sixteen and seventeen of the code. And then I will pull up the gypsum and Carbondale. Codes. And their sections that. Correspond with ours, so you can compare the two, I won't send you the entire code, they're like five hundred or six hundred pages, so I'll just pull up the section that corresponds with our, our sections. So you can look at those compared to ours. I will. Call you. Or text you and let you know when yours is done, leave it on desk.
Okay.
I, I reckon I'll do one for you, but if you, if you all want me to do one, I don't have a problem with that, I print them out in hard copy and put them in an envelope. And he comes and gets them rather than you guys.
Four or thirty pages, that'd be great, because I can't read them on my.
Yeah, I don't, it does, I can't read on the computer. Like that one, so I'll, I'll see how many it is, but I'll print them out and text you, so if you want to, let me know, and I'll just leave it with the Andes. Okay. I will get ahold of the school. About a student over there.
Yeah, he's writing a long one.
That's all right, we'll take it. Well, you could.
So this basically gives us ten meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Because January seventeenth will be the last meeting. Before the hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
So, by January third, we should have a strong idea.
We need.
If we did do an extension.
Okay. It sounds good.
That's in my mindset.
Okay.
Is that time enough to get it to the town, the board to approve, too, if we get it?
If we get them. The ordinance is done by January third, now, keep in mind though, too. The town is closed. Uh, Monday. Twenty-fifth. And the twenty-sixth, and then it's closed on the first.
Christmas.
Christmas, Christmas. Andy, yeah, December, December comes before January.
Quit writing and hung up.
But January third, if we have. Been able to get the ordinances done with the board. By January third, or we can, at least by January third, know if we need to have a special meeting. With the board to pass those ordinances.
Or pass another special meeting for the Board of Trustees.
To, to, yes.